Second, um, period of the evening. This is the Jersey Sanford redevelopment plan. And today we're on the Jersey Sanford redevelopment.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm looking at the table.
Okay.
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 Well, now we have a third.
Just put it right here. At least in Florida. Florida's maybe they're all equally important. All right. Okay.
Mr. Dominguez, just sorry.
Just put it right here. At least in Florida. Florida's maybe they're all equally important. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Dominguez, just sorry.
Okay. Uh, sorry.
You sort of from just on the good source you were treating.
So, I do. Ladies and gentlemen of the New Brunswick Planning Board, I'm Dan Nada, as the Director of Planning, Community and Agribusiness of the City of New Brunswick. Uh, today I am presenting to you and to the public here uh, a redevelopment plan for, uh, what we call uh, the Jersey Sanford redevelopment plan. It runs from Stanford Street. As you can see, this one, two, right about here on Lake Street, just before Mitchell Avenue. These are four lots on the northern side of town of the railroad tracks. This is 90 Jersey Ave. Currently, you may know it as where Pratt currently is. This is 108 and 120 Jersey Avenue. Both hold factory warehouse style buildings, about three or four stories tall, currently holding a multitude of uses of various light industrial types and office types. This uh, has a smattering of small buildings over here. Uh, many people know it as the Roanoke site and is currently a largely undeveloped brownfield. Uh, and so, the purpose of this redevelopment plan.
Sir, Mr. Dominguez, has your smart head as a one?
Yes, certainly. Now, as uh, you've all uh, gotten a copy of the redevelopment plan sometime last week, and there's a few copies there on the, on the table for review. Uh, it's a not unthorough document, about fifty some odd pages. And uh, if there's any typos or mistakes, I did use uh, Mr. Patterson's uh, fair and redevelopment plan as a base because I thought it was a very good template. So, I apologize if you point them out to me and uh, the final versions can have them correct. Uh, I've had quite a few people look this over, but you never know, things slip through the cracks, you have more eyes than you. So, we have considered this site and this area as ripe for redevelopment for some time. Uh, but we hadn't been motivated uh, to act until sometime last year, uh, when we were approached by a developer named Accurate Builders. Yeah, you can go ahead. We can get that up. Um, who uh, who approached us and said that he was in the process of gaining site control of this site, and we thought it would be an optimal time to create a redevelopment plan for these four parcels in the vision that we had. So, we had a vision of creating some new construction here of about six hundred, seven hundred units, landing on a number of approximately six hundred and sixty uh, market rate, well, all right, I'll context that later, six hundred and sixty apartments. Uh, plus, as you can see here, and this conceptual, about a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of office, lab space, R and D, brand new state of the art, possibly some restaurants, some coworking space, and enough parking for all the facilities. Uh, here, we have a small little cutout, but just for the sake of everyone's identification. Uh, NJ Transit will be carving this out from this parcel uh, as some sort of either yard for fixing up their uh, their trains or maintenance or something, but they're, they're taking it away from whoever owns it right now. Uh, and so, we are hoping to, uh, as redevelopment triples out this way, with the recently amended uh, redevelopment plan for Jersey handy, uh, with this site, the possibility of there being additional development here, possibly a new school, that the fact that we have an existing residential area over here with the Lincoln Gardens neighborhood, that this area be converted into more of a transitional neighborhood with housing as well as light industrial, high-tech uses before you get past it to the heavier industrial side of town. Uh, I believe that this redevelopment plan does accomplish these goals. You've all had a chance to review all fifty some odd pages. This is a rendering.
Mr. Dominguez, I'm sorry, before you did it, you approved it.
Yeah. Say two, yes, sir. I'll mark it now.
Okay, and then you approve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is a rendering of what a proposed development would look like on this site. We would have six hundred and sixty units. Now, six hundred and sixty units would be, if you've read the plan, be based off of a maximum build out with a density bonus for ten percent affordability baked into the project. Ten percent affordability would guarantee sixty-six units of affordable if the, if the developer were to pursue all six hundred and sixty units that they're able to develop. Split over two buildings with nice interchanges inside the building. The developer would open up this area here. This would be remediated to brownfield site. The rear part would be turned into a park for the city. It would be privately owned and privately maintained, but we would have a ninety-nine year easement with the developer so that this park would be publicly accessible to all residents of New Brunswick and anyone, whoever wants to use it at all times. And uh, with that, this is a pesty document, and I opened it up to the board for any questions that they have in their review of the. In two, two. I have a pop raise this hand. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
But these renderings, these are just concepts, correct? This is, is this the actual planning? These aren't reflective of the, really, the, the, the.
No, these, these are very recent. So, uh, I, I decided to leave in the, there's a hypothetical in the uh, in the project, in the plan that you may be referring to, uh, which was an early draft concept when we were sort of conjuring up the development here. And considering that, you know, there isn't a site plan for the board, this is just for the redevelopment plan, uh, things can still change. But as of right now, Accurate Builders did commission this by their designer, lesser designs, and this is what they envisioned for the site, as of right now. To be determined based on the parameters of this plan and what they bring, if they were to give a redeveloper, and if they provide a site plan to this board, should they choose to develop out this site. It, right now, it's seeming like it will lend itself more to these plans than the hypothetical site layout in the, in the redevelopment plan. But uh, considering that we don't know exactly where it's going to go, uh, I chose to leave the hypothetical in as is, considering it's not too much of a departure, in my opinion, from what we see here with housing and a smattering of smaller office and lab spaces and the park.
Thank you. You know, really, I think the document is well done. I think the city did an excellent job. Um, these renderings are very impressive. Two thoughts, um, that I just wanted to maybe think about. Uh, the city has done an amazing job creating bike lanes.
Uh huh.
Most of those are on street. Um, given the access to the NJ Transit and the need to create a buffer there, could we also look to ensure that the redeveloper could, what I think could be given to be a um, off-road bikeway that would run adjacent to the NJ Transit line, uh, recognizing that, you know, we're only creating a park right now, but uh, hopefully, long-term, could run closer to downtown and then um, also to the southwest.
So, would you, would you be referring to the long here? Yep. It's a, it's a possibility, uh, though we hadn't considered. There are conflicts with whatever NJ Transit chooses to do this, as well as uh, the property ownership break here and other properties, other developments. Exactly. Down. Uh, so I think that it's probably uh, a big lift, but it depends on uh, there, there's a concern here that if this is, if, let's say we, we were to accomplish that, and then it just ends here. Right. And here, and is never built on, it's sort of a problematic amenity. Uh, but, but one that I, I, I don't disagree with you. It would be nice to have some more interconnectivity uh, with the bike lanes. However, for what it's worth, we do have some locked-in bike and e-scooter parking on this site, as well as hopefully uh, solar powered, uh, solar covered parking candidates. So.
So, my thought is, you get, you get one opportunity, right? So, the chance that, and the site uh, more towards the east is also undeveloped. So, we can't come back in the future and say, now create a bike lane, right? If, if there's a site that's going to come to the east, which I think is owned by, yes, towards the, the larger site, right, is.
Technically, the other redevelopment plan uh, is one block over. So, it ends here on, on Delavan Street. So, the redevelopment, all right, so let me rephrase that. The redevelopment area slash plan covers up the Stanford. Uh, the other developer, which is either Edgewood Properties or some variant of, uh, I believe a Jack Morris entity, uh, their ownership and development stake ends at Delaware. So, they are not developing Stanford Street. Uh, at least not at the current juncture. Those properties are owned by a, a whole host of different property owners. There might be a couple of houses there, uh, some garages. Uh, so you do have a whole block worth of discontinued ownership as a break between the two sites, two possible developments, so.
But it is vacant land, and at least in the most recent version of Google Maps that I looked at, there is actually a dirt path that right now. So, I would recommend that we try to add to the opportunities for creating uh, off-road access for bikes and pedestrians. It could be a nice amenity, and I think it would cost, at this point, if we tried to insert it now, the cost is much more than minimalist than it would be if we tried to go back and add this in. Uh, so I'd like to see the plan, the plan reflect that. Um, my other, you know, question that I had was on the affordable housing component of the plan.
Uh huh.
Um, two thoughts. One, uh, affordable housing is not defined. And so, I think leaving it in, um, just without any sort of definition creates a problem moving forward. Um, and I would think that, um, you know, most inclusionary reserving order is is today twenty percent. Um, so I think it's worth consideration to, even if we said ten percent workforce, ten percent affordable, uh, or, or if we defined ten percent below certain AMI, like below sixty percent AMI, give the developer options on plan of that. But I think we should consider a higher percentage, um, that's not overly onerous because, you know, when you're talking about workforce housings or people making up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's worth an, an additional.
I'll, I'll, we'll take it under advisement.
So, you indicated in the, the plan that there will be no exercise in owner domain, right?
This is correct. So, the Accurate Builders, I believe, owns three of these parcels and has site plan control, uh, contract purchase of the other sites. So, uh, not only do they basically site control the whole area, uh, as a redevelopment plan for an area in need of rehabilitation, there could not be any eminent domain uh, issued by the city.
And there's also no residences at all?
Not a single one.
But there are some businesses.
Correct. There are some businesses uh, on the site, and there is a component in the rear of the plan allowing for a, a window of first refusal to, for those businesses to have an opportunity to move into the new spaces being created, as well as uh, we created a phasing component to the plan uh, to encourage uh, that the developer would not just build this out, completely eliminating everything here, only to then maybe lag on this site or uh, build this out very slowly, giving uh, an incentive, for example, to build this out. And so, we would have this as an opportunity for those folks to move back in here, should they choose.
Maybe we'll hear from some of those folks. I think a lot, I was just wondering about that, and how practical that is in terms of their ability to be able to um, keep the businesses on site. And I had another question, but I, I've lost it, but it may come to me, so.
So, uh, Dan, just my notification, uh, the plan is as you're educating a little bit. So, the approval of the redevelopment plan, what are the binding consequences of the approval of the plan for the provisions, stuff and proposals, or my colleagues? Are we then locked into what we approved? Or obviously, this one, the site plan.
Right, so this, so this would, this is an, this is a vote on advice and consent to refer back to the city council, who will then approve the final plan with or without, or with a variation or some of these edits into that plan. They would adopt it, should you act favorably, and technically, they, they have some sort of authority to impose it, even if the board were to act negatively, um, with rationale. Uh, they would adopt it by ordinance, and then if this developer or any developer comes in uh, with the correct criteria and are designated a redeveloper by the redevelopment authority in the City of New Brunswick Housing Authority, they would be designated redeveloper and would be able to construct and present a site plan based on the parameters of this plan as adopted by the city council.
So. They could still come back for variants, right? I mean, they.
Fury.
If they build something, if they want to build something that's different than this, they'll come back to us and ask for, just as we've done in the past, maybe.
So, it's like all deviations, and for some reason, we changed from various to deviations.
Okay.
So, you have a developer that approached the city on this.
Correct.
That, this plan would essentially become akin to sort of an R and P that would go out to other, uh, other developers.
Well, no, we adopt it, it sits. This is public notice. If anyone's interested, they can come through.
Right.
And, I mean, we're not going to advertise it, we're not going to run this, like, I'm not going to put this whole thing in the paper or anything. But, you know, if anyone hits the criteria, the uh, the redevelopment authority can grant them a redeveloper status. Be, and, and in fact, you know, we, we want to proceed with this development, should this uh, developer who's approached us, if they back out of this, we still think this is a good idea and something we want to pursue, particularly for the creation of additional uh, state-of-the-art lab and office and R and D space, uh, that we think would benefit the city with all the ends and nets that we do here anyway. Uh, and uh, we already have some of that going on out this way, and it would be good to have some, uh, some higher quality stuff going on over here if we could possibly do so. As well as the ability to rehabilitate several acres of land that's currently a brownfield and actually create a, a public park. So, that's sort of the, the goal. So, we want this, whether or not the developer backs out with current developer or another developer comes in, this is what we would like to see on this site.
And if the developer or subsequent developer comes back asking for deviations, uh, does the board have an opportunity to uh, take side with the merits of those deviations?
Of course.
And to the extent that they require modifications when we approve today, I assume that we will have an opportunity to provide additional asks as offsets for any deviations that we would have granted?
As with any other site plan.
Again, I'm just.
No, no, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand exactly what we're locked into by a group of redevelopment planners.
Yeah, you're locked into these boundaries. If they ask for deviations, then it's like any other plan that comes before here with uh, a request for variances, and you can act accordingly.
That would not come to this board, that would result.
That depends on if it's a B-variant.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think this plan only permits two or three different types of B-variants, as it's in the back. Uh, so certain of the, of the B-variants would not be allowable under this plan.
Just, just to point out, obviously, this, this project is already purchased. The land, developers already purchased the land.
Uh huh.
They built ones that drew up the conceptual designs. So, this, although we're making this template for them, there are obviously somewhat on board with it because there are continuing forward with it.
Yes.
So, we're not expecting them necessarily to come back and say, well, you know, why we come to this? We already, you know, they've, they've already come forth at a certain point saying this is a little pretty.
Happy with.
To fall in line with the template.
Correct. Correct.
And clearly, it fits into the redevelopment plan of the, the master plan of the city. That area is in need of redevelopment, and it brings a lot of mixed use, and it brings housing in, and it brings that type in, which um, we're starting to rely a couple of things in this area. So, it's a good project that fits the master plan of the city, that'll be.
Yes, and the stables. Now, you might as well, for anything, but we'll, we'll build it up.
Any, any considerations to have this development have worked up surrounding neighborhoods? And of course, a park is a managing for everybody, you know? That, that's definitely positive, but any comments on that?
Well, uh, I believe the plan calls for the developer to uh, go out of pocket for the construction of a signalized intersection here.
All right.
Um, and presumably, they'll have to do a, a traffic study of what impact it'll have on the neighborhood. There are, there is, again, the Lincoln Gardens neighborhood over here. Uh, this road connects up to Route 27, uh, and can be somewhat problematic from time to time. Uh, and, you know, there, there is a lot of activity here, but uh, we've uh, tried to minimize the inlets on the Jersey Avenue side to have the parking deck on the rear and access through the back of Stanford here against the uh, against the railroad tracks, uh, which was our preference to uh, minimize the traffic on Jersey Avenue as it is a somewhat flowing corridor that some people use to get to work. And we want to minimize the negative impact. Additionally, with the possibility of uh, school going here, uh, this redevelopment uh, contributes to the overall improvement of the area. Uh, it's a better uh, better set of uses to have across the street from a potential school, uh, and a potential redevelopment project on that side, as well as near the Lincoln Gardens District and the future redevelopment of the other site. So, ultimately, he, the developer will have to present, whoever the developer is, will have to present their uh, the traffic study, as well as any other issues that may crop up. Uh, and we'll review that with our board planner board engineer, and they'll all have to present and answer questions to them to the board this board for site plan review. Um, so they're, they're not necessarily getting off, oh, they're going to have to answer to all those questions. Any other questions? Do you have a comment? Uh, I don't know how this works. Aravind, do you want to do?
Sure, we're listening.
Sir?
Charles Cradville, still Charles Cradville.
Still no.
Thank you.
Sorry, tell her for sure. I guess.
So, I have some questions. Uh, since Mr. Dominguez mentioned that the possibility of a new school here, does the city know what kind of contamination is present on the site?
I'm alert.
Okay. Uh, this uh, site was referred to as a brownfield as well.
Yes.
Uh, you said Roanoke.
Roanoke, some sort of French name. There, there are several French high industry folks over the, the decades, going back, that uh, contaminated that site significantly, yes.
Any idea what type of contaminants are present?
No, but the developer would have to bring it up to enough standard that you can actually have a park there, and then you could have office and lab space, which is regulated by the state. So, they would have to have a minimum, bring it up to that standard.
Okay. Um, the director mentioned some incentive to try and get them to do the more difficult part first, the contaminated site first, or at least on the similar timeline so that folks could maybe only move once if they're going to have to move, uh, businesses being relocated. What is that incentive? How would that be incentive?
Well, no, it's, it's just phasing. So, we're dictating how the developer would phase out their project. I'm going to have to go into the table of contents and give you a second.
Take, take.
While he's looking through that, I'll just say that I did appreciate everyone's questions, and I liked your idea for the, the bike path. I think that could be good, and I hope that makes it into the final plan one day.
But it, sorry, this is sort of that, the, the, there's brownfield remediation money that if you create a park that's municipally owned, is actually state funds that allow you to, you could have remediation. So, there's probably a strategic um, and business alignment in terms of why you want to do that, plus daylighting that street is probably the positive um, impact to the city as well.
Thank you for that, and that reminds me of a question I wanted to ask. I think it's a not great idea to have it be a privately owned park, uh, which is what was said, that it would be privately owned with a sort of ninety-nine year lease to the city and.
Easement.
Guaranteed, an easement to be, you know, guaranteed public access at certain times of day, you know? As somebody who's been coming to your meetings for many months complaining about a prior promise for, you know, of privately owned land to be publicly accessible, I think that's a bad way to go because it, it ends up, sometimes the private folks don't keep their word and, you know, have no, no experience with this developer or no reason to doubt them uh, being good on their word. But I would vastly prefer if it was going to be a, a park for it to be a publicly owned city park, and maybe perhaps that could even open up the opportunity for more uh, you know, uh, resources to, to, to make that park happen if it were municipally owned, as you said.
All right, so to jump to your other point, I uh, for whatever reason, I can't find it in this.
Top of page twenty-two.
What?
Top of page twenty-two.
Thank you. I was just going to try to step forward, but. There. So, no more than three hundred and sixty residential dwelling units, basically, this building over here, um, assuming this layout stays, uh, may be completed before beginning construction on non-residential components. The remaining residential units may be constructed in parallel with additional development components, but a certificate of occupancy for the additional residential units will not be provided until at least one non-residential building receives its signature certificate of occupancy. So, theoretically, they could build this one, and they can start building this one in parallel with one of these or more of these, but they cannot occupy this one until they get at least one of these uh, ready for occupancy.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily guarantee that the tenants aren't going to have to move twice?
No, but it does, that depends on how this would be developed and, uh, and the clearance of the section. So, there, there's a lot of factors at play, but there is no guarantee that they would not. And uh, let me just. Designated redeveloper will be expected, this is a completely different section, section nine, displacement, will be expected to offer right first refusal to rent space in the new non-residential developments to the existing tenants of 90, 10, and 120 Jersey Avenue until the new non-residential developments are fully occupied or 12 months have elapsed from the issuance of your certificate of occupancy, whichever of those first.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just summarized by saying that I feel like the board could probably use more information about what type of contamination is present, so that you can make some judgments about what type of timeline is realistic for developing this part, so that you can make sure that the incentives are actually going to ensure that folks don't have to move twice. If you can prevent that from happening, I think that would be better than if you can't. And it seems like, you know, the developer is serious about this. We should get some information then about the cleanup and the contamination, make sure they're serious about that part of it too, because, you know, we can't have developments going up if the contamination's not remedied.
Just a question here, realistically, this redevelopment plan, though,
when they propose a site plan here, that's when all that information will be available to us.
This really has nothing to do with, you know, the conceptual portion, has nothing to do with what's actually going in, it's just the template of what we would like to see. And so, when the site plan comes up, that's when we get all the additional information, correct? From whatever developer takes.
Sure, but just, there's a phasing component, it would make sense to know, well, how long's the remediation going to take? So that we can.
That's what we can find out now, anyway. Let's have a jurisdiction, right?
No, as I understand Mr. Cradell's comment, this board really is just sitting in as an advice, in a role, as an advisory role. Council is the only ones that can actually make an ordinance that would incorporate whatever they felt was appropriate. They're asking for our input. Mr. Dominguez will go back to council with a, this is what the board opined, and we'll go back to the board, including the comments of Mr. Cradell, I'm sure we'll make it into the comments, so. And city council would make that decision. We wouldn't have jurisdiction over that until it came to the site plan.
We have no, if I, we have no jurisdiction over environmental regulation at all?
No, that's the.
Well, something can say.
Hard question. The city views the private maintenance of the park for 99 years as a good deal, as opposed to that being a city-owned and maintained park? Just following up on that question.
That's easy.
Well, yeah.
No, no, I, okay, I just thought you had one to it.
No, the same thing you said, again, the value of it being, explain, you know, why there's a preference in this case for it to be a privately-owned park maintained for 99 years as opposed to like a permanently protected city park.
There are, there is a benefit of having a private maintenance and public access. For sure, the city does see that as a benefit. There's also the alternative, you know, the factor that I do believe the developer will feel pressured by his tenants to maintain the park at a high standard. If there's supposed, if there's potential retail, restaurants, and interconnectivity to this residential component that they'll want to fill at 90% potentially of market rate, they're going to want that park to be an amenity and not an eyesore. I think that they'll be able to dynamically take care of that park in a way that, you know, obviously sometimes makes it hard for us to take care of our parks, but at the same time granting us essentially 100 years of access, as if it were our own park and we were able to qualify it in our own inventories, in public space, to some extent. And you never know, in the next 10, 15, 90 years, how we'll feel about the park, whether or not the city will take action to fully absorb the park. There's a lot of factors at play here, and considering also the fact that it's, there's a lot of work on the site that this developer's going to put into the project, I don't have any objection to them essentially laying claim to that land being theirs within the parameters that they haven't had it for 99 years as a public park.
Settle arrangements are becoming more and more common, whether it's group ownership in both sides, in military park in New York, for example, as a private operator, even if it would be your, in some cases where you've got essentially public space that's maintained by.
Right, here, so. Several parks in New York City.
I definitely see the advantage of it, of course, but if the law confirms, you know, it's potentially developable in the future.
It is, potentially, but 100 years from now, we may want to develop it. We don't know what the things are going to look like between now and then. Things have changed so much in the last 90, in the last 10 years, 20 years, it's hard to say. But I think this is a good middle ground. And also, we have a, the city has a park currently that's in a similar situation, Pine Street, AKA Renovation Park, which is on perpetual 10-year leases with records. So it's not something foreign to us, and a 99-year lease is a lot more stable than perpetual 10-year leases at that point.
Mr. Dominguez, I would appreciate if the board, if the city council would consider requesting kind of firing the developer that displaced individuals, in addition to a right first refusal, there'd be some consideration with respect to another boundary on increasing rents, at least for the first 12 months that that replacement property is offered. So if we're not giving somebody an option in name only, you know, it doubles their rent, which obviously might be unrealistic, or if the city council would consider that, that would be a good gesture as well.
Do you want to define that?
To me, it's 20%, 25%.
Okay.
You know, this will obviously be an upgraded amenity, but, you know, I think the people who are there deserve like, you know, a shot of joy of the benefit of redevelopment.
On per square foot basis? Do you try to?
I mean, that's a, folks who are aware of the implications of that, so. I'd prefer that we just, yeah.
I just want to, I appreciate these comments, and want to, and I haven't corrected them all, but I want them to be clear, so that there's no ambiguity, and that, you know, you don't want to trap people, and if this.
Mr. Dominguez would take respect to council, and some concessions to you.
So, do we have any more recommendations for the plan? I think there are three, and I don't want mine, mine too, to just be, I mean, I'm still pleased to feel if anybody wants to weigh in. So I heard three potential modifications to the plan. One was a 20% maximum increase on a per-square-foot basis for commercial rents for a 12-month period?
For those who are eligible for right first refusal.
Okay, great. Number two, my thoughts on the affordable housing would be to have either requirement of 10% below 60% AMI, or 10% below 120% of AMI, and 10% below 80% of AMI. And I would like inclusion of a bike and pedestrian way adjacent to the railroad way running through the park to the southern, south of the park.
So, Mr. Dominguez, would you present this plan to the council, it's going to the board, these are the big changes will be your plan, and then it's just something that we discuss, and then it's something that we have to follow, obviously, if we have to.
I'll take all of these items in advisement, and I will prepare a report back to council. We'll probably not have this at the next council meeting for first reading, but at the following, I want to give time to prepare said report. And that's how we'll go for it from there.
If anybody has changes in my thoughts, please don't hesitate to speak.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, are those three items necessarily going to be in your recommendation, or are you just saying they're under advisement?
For the moment, under advisement, it will definitely be in the report, and there'll be some assessment as to how they'll fit within the scope of the general plan, and that's, and then it will be put to the board in a few weeks.
So let's get, okay, what I'm proposing, I think we should say as a body what we would like or not like.
Right.
And so, if we're saying one, two, three, none, that's fine, but I think we should make a formal, or yes, we're recommending this plan plus these additions.
Right, and the report will reflect that.
Okay. But I want to make sure everybody has a chance to either.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm not quite sure that I'm on board with all three of those additions.
Right.
So that's why I wanted to look at the processes and how to.
Ultimately, so that it'll be in the report, we'll assess how those three will fit into the plan. They will all be in the report and reported to the planning board, I mean, to the city council. Whether or not all three make it into the presented version of the plan remains to be seen as to their fit, and so I'll be spending some time.
So that's, I want to be more clear.
Yeah.
So what I would like the board to be voting on is a very clear set of instructions to the city council. This is what we, as a body, want to approve. It's the plan, and then we have three amendments to that plan.
Right.
That we're moving forward, and we can vote on them separately if we want, right?
That's correct. It would be the consensus of the board as a recommendation that Mr. Dominguez would bring back to council. So on each of those three, as Mr. Dominguez presents it to council, it gets said. The unanimous consent of the board was that they requested that the city council also consider maybe the quarters of the board as she considers safe.
I propose that we take a vote on adopting the plan, but then also, do you want to do it? Each addition as a separate vote?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, let's do that. So we're going to take four votes now?
You want to jump back in?
Yeah. Yeah, we might.
Oh, okay.
We might have to call the council.
Any additional comments? So I think that the first vote that we're taking on is to move forward to the city council, the approval of the redevelopment plan.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Dylan Cecho? Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sefora-Ludwig?
Yes.
Crystal Atella?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Pedro Lina?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes. Our second vote would be on the amendment to have an upper boundary, the increased rent of 20% per square foot for those particular commercial tenants who could be displaced and would be eligible for relocation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could be clear on that point, this would be a motion to recommend to council that they.
Thank you. And we have our motion.
So, before we move to that, just, so, if you imagine anybody is quoting Dominguez, there's a different number that would make you more comfortable, and we're not happy to discuss that, that's just, you know, learning from, from us.
Dylan Cecho?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sefora-Ludwig?
No.
Crystal Atella?
No.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Pedro Lina?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes. Our second amendment proposal to the city council would be to modify the affordable housing language to give the developer two options. One would be to produce 20% affordable with 100, with 10% being at 120% of AMI, and 10% being at 80% of AMI, or 10% and 60% of AMI. Any issue?
I'll move.
Second.
Dylan Cecho?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sefora-Ludwig?
No.
Crystal Atella?
No.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Pedro Lina?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes. And then the third proposal is inclusion of a railgun bike and pedestrian way running along the railroad.
I'll move. I'll second.
Dylan Cecho?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sefora-Ludwig?
No.
Crystal Atella?
No.
Ryan Berger?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
John Pedro Lina?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.